The views and opinions expressed on this program are solely those of the host and guests and do not reflect the opinions or policies of the station, its owners, or its advertisers. All content should be considered editorial in nature. Listener discretion is advised.
Recorded live from the radio studios of WFAY and WMRV, Antroponas Media presents Cumberland County's smartest hour of talk radio. Welcome back to another edition of the Carolina Cabinet.
All right. Well, good morning and welcome back to the Carolina Cabinet. I'm Peter Pappas and I'm your host still this morning.
Yes.
We're proud to be the only homegrown conservative talk radio show in this region, and we know this is the smartest hour of radio. Our job is to give a voice to the conservatives of Fayetteville, Cumberland County, and beyond. This morning, I welcome back Pastor Joshua Goodman.
Good morning, family.
And Mrs. Laura Musler over here hiding in the corner.
Hello.
Hello, hello.
Hey, you guys put baby in the corner.
Oh, we do, we do, but you won't stay there long, so. And Mr. Stefan Ferguson, nice to meet you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Welcome, welcome. So, to our audience, I hope you'll do us a favor, take time this week to visit one of our commercial sponsors. Let them know you heard their message right here on the Carolina Cabinet. And with that, we'll be right back.
News, weather, sports, and common sense talk in the morning. Grab another cup of coffee and settle in for more of the Carolina Cabinet, Eastern North Carolina's sexiest conservative talk show.
Good morning, Dr. Josh.
I like the way he says it, the sexiest.
We played for you, you know, you and your son.
The sexiest.
The sexiest. Well, yeah, too bad we're not, I'm not the best reader right now, you know.
We're not done yet. You'll get to read that in a minute.
Yeah, I get to read the outro later, yeah. So, we go around and we basically say what we've been up to the last week or so, but we, we've already done it. We already, we've already discussed, I mean, I had candidate meet and greet, you're working at the, at the school, and Laura, I don't know, what were you doing, something?
I was help, I was at the mayoral debate.
At the mayoral debate, yeah, yeah. You're like a bad penny with me lately. You like show up everywhere.
I think it's you show up. I was there first.
It's my fault, yeah. Well, it's usually, that's usually the response I get from most women in my life is, it's your fault.
Yeah, you did it.
So, what have you been up to, sir? Like, what's going on?
What have I been up to? I've been campaigning.
Campaigning.
Campaigning strong, talking to the neighbors and in the community and people in District One about what their vision and what they would like to see in District One in the city of Fayetteville. And just, you know, really working toward that effort, you know. We have, you know, this week is early voting begins, so we're preparing for that Thursday morning. And a lot of things that are going to be transpiring, we have some forums coming up.
Okay. So where, so where are you going to be the next two weeks of early voting?
Where am I going to be? Well, I'm not going to be at the Board of Elections.
No, no.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll be there some, but I'll be, I'll still be.
We won't betray your secret campaign strategy to your opponent. That's not that question, believe me, but...
Where, where's one?
District One is the north side of Fayetteville.
Okay.
If you're coming off of Country Club Drive and you hit Ramsey, take a left, Law Road where the CVS is.
I know where it's at.
That's where District One begins.
Oh, it begins there and goes down Ramsey?
It goes all the way down Ramsey, past 295, the last two neighborhoods, or Greystone and Fairfield.
Yep, I know that, okay.
And then if you're coming down, take a left on MacArthur, go all the way around, everything on the right hand side is District One.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's a big area.
About forty, forty-seven neighborhoods, yeah.
And I mean, it's, it's an interesting, it's, because it's not as far as like Shaw Mill or any of those roads, is it? Yeah, so, but it's further, further up, but you have, you've got two really distinct Fayettevilles. You've got some very, you know, income challenged individuals, and then you get up to that north side of Ramsey and you got some very wealthy individuals. And so that you got, definitely have the two, what I'll say, the kind of two sides of Fayetteville.
Absolutely. And so how long have you been living in this area? Or, I mean, could you, because I, look, I tried to Google you and I'm finding all kinds of interesting things. I know Laura's got a few things.
I do.
So, why don't you tell me about this guy? What did you find?
He wrote a book.
He wrote a book?
He did. It's called Legacy Reloaded.
Okay.
And it has to do with a nonviolent awakening. And how appropriate is that after this week?
For this week? Wow, that's crazy. So, what are the high, what are the Cliff Notes? Let's see them.
Well, it is, it's based on, I've been working with, my work with nonviolence and conflict resolution has spanned about twenty years. I'm honored to be the only individual who has ever been licensed by the King Estate and the King family to perform Martin Luther King Jr. and recreate his copyrighted works.
Oh, wow.
And so I've delved deep into that. I've worked with the King family, the King Center in Atlanta, Georgia. And these experience, my first public appearance or public speaking as, as King was at the groundbreaking for the Martin Luther King Jr. Park here in Fayetteville.
Oh, wow.
And that was in 2003.
Oh, wow.
That's when we broke ground. I was on that board. But since that time, I've really delved deep into it. And, so what I'm doing now is taking all that knowledge and, and bringing it out. So the book is about my experiences. Many of the places that Dr. King spoke from, Memphis, Tennessee, Birmingham, Alabama, all those places I've been to, and I've had the privilege of speaking in those same pool pits at Sixteenth Street Baptist Church. You know, so this book is kind of about those experiences. And what God was trying to show me during that period, I was looking for something deeper, and he was trying to show me that piece so that I could take that and, and reinvigorate the words of Dr. King and bring about, that bring about peace and, and love and justice.
We need more of that right now.
Absolutely, absolutely. So you can per, ah, no.
We, you know, we'll be happy, we're going to actually post links to your book, because that's really interesting. And, you know, it also speaks to what people don't get about Fayetteville is that we have talent in our backyard.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
I don't know how much money the guy made with his book, but I'm assuming it took some time and energy and some good brain power to get down there and write the book. So, I appreciate that. And that, that's what makes our community really, really awesome.
And it's a voice, it is a voice that needs to be heard.
Well, he can also do the voice.
No pun intended.
He does, he does do the voice, literally.
Yeah, I didn't mean it that way, but yes, it's, it's, it's a message that needs to be heard.
You see why I have a pastor on the show?
Absolutely, absolutely.
There's a reason why he's here, so.
So tell us about yourself. What, what's your background a little bit? You know, you've been in Fayetteville?
All my life. I've been in Fayetteville all my life. I'm a product of the Cumberland County Schools.
Okay.
And I went into the military. Well, I graduated, and then I had one day in between, and the next day I was headed to Texas.
Okay.
To serve in the, in the United States Army. I ended up coming back to Fort Bragg. I served as a sergeant here at Fort Bragg as a medical NCO.
Okay, okay.
And I chose the medical field because of my concern for people's health and well-being. And I served there, and then I, once I was released, or released, that is a good, but once I, well, you know, US Army stands for Uncle Sam ain't released me yet. So, once I was honorably discharged from the military, I went into my passion for broadcasting and communications. And I, my first radio station was at WLRD, the Lumbee Regional Development, 107.7 FM, which Beasley purchased a few years after that, and they have it now, 107.7. And then I actually went to the studios to interview. I had a local magazine that I started publishing called The Vision. And I went to WFNC to interview Wendy Riddle, who was very well-known in this community. And I interviewed her, and while I was interviewing for the magazine, I asked her, did they have any openings? I was kind of being funny, but you know. And she said, well, you know, I think we do. Jeff Thompson is our news director, and, you know, I'll let you talk to him after we finish the interview. I talked to him. He said, well, I know you can write, because you have the magazine, but can you talk? Can you, you know. So he gave me, he was a cassette player. And he, and he said, when you're ready, just, you know, record, and I'll be back in about five minutes. He gave me some AP. He went to the AP, pulled out some pieces, and I read it. He came back in, said, you know, he listened to about three seconds. He said, when can you start? And I said, today. He said, how about Thursday? So I, I, I worked there for about eight years.
Okay.
And then I just, I became self-employed, doing my own work. So I do a lot of voiceover work, and then I got really deep into the work with Martin Luther King Jr.
Well, Jeff is a friend. You know, I, I had lunch with him about three weeks ago.
Did you?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. He's a Baldino's fan. It's, you know.
We all are.
Lots of people have lunch with him.
He lives nearby, Fort Bragg Road, and I, I actually called him, this is how it worked. I called him to talk to him about what I'm doing here, to see how I can improve, do better. And we spent the whole hour and a half at lunch talking about anything but.
But, yeah.
You know, and it's, it's so good to have seen him again, and I'm overdue for another lunch, so I'm going to call you maybe, and you can, you can come have lunch with us, so.
Please, I definitely want to get back with you. I will say, that was the best, most productive years of my life, period. I learned so much. Yeah, it was just, it was incredible, and...
Well, I think when I was three or four, he had me on the radio, doing a remote with my dad when we were opening one of the stores, and like, what's your favorite sandwich? Or, you know, just that kind of kitsch stuff. But that's how long we've known Jeff, like WFLB, whatever, it was down there behind the old McDonald's on Bragg Boulevard. That's how long we've known Mr. Pappas.
So what is your favorite sandwich?
Man, whatever, this week, you know. Today, today and Saturday was ham and cheese.
Really?
That's it. Simple. And lately, pepper steak he brings. He's like, what do you want for lunch? Pepper steak. So, yeah. So, but anyway, but no, I, he's a, he's a friend. He's, he's one of the last industry professionals. Like, he handed you the AP wire and said, read this. He didn't say, interpret it, or tell us what our audience should listen, or how they should feel about it. He said, read this.
Right.
Right.
And I would anchor, sometimes I'd anchor the morning show with him if Wendy wasn't in or somebody was in. And I remember, I didn't know the word posthumous, I thought it was posthumous. And we were live on the air, and I said, and so and so, and posthumous, and he didn't say anything, but when I, when we went off the air, he, he went in.
Yeah, I bet he's...
It's not posthumous, it's posthumous. I'm like, how could it possibly be posthumous?
Well, I'm sure then you weren't a fan, but now you wouldn't mind him yelling at you a little bit. That'd be kind of, that'd be kind of, it'd kind of be, wouldn't be right if he didn't.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's incredible.
So, well, that definitely dates you in this city. If you were on that show with Jeff, then I know.
Well, he left in, oh, well, I think it was '09.
It was, and I think he did some time at WIDU for Wes and them over there. And, but he's definitely retired now.
He is.
Definitely. Yes, he is.
Because I was going to go and ask him to do some drops for me.
I'm going to mention your book again, because it's called Legacy Reloaded.
Yes.
You talk a lot about unity and bridging the divide. Where do you see Fayetteville needing the most helping hand right now? And what, if you get in office, are you going to do about it?
Okay, what do I see Fayetteville as far as coming together and uniting? You know, one of the things that I noticed after, particularly after the pandemic, is that a lot of our neighborhood watch and our neighborhood, community watches are, have been less active. And I don't know what that is a result of, but even some of the neighborhoods that were very active, they have become more inactive. And one of the things I think it is necessary is to rebuild that, reinvigorate that, get more community engagement for, where the community can come together. Conversations is, is huge, and we just, we don't have these conversations. And I believe that if we can be more united, more community engaged, one of the things I want to do is incorporate town hall meetings outside of the city council meetings, because that's for the city, but I want to do a district, a meeting where we meet as a district and talk about our concerns, even though it's the city as a whole at the end of the day. So I, that's something I wanted, another thing that I would love to do, I, I teach a class on conflict resolution. It's really Kingian nonviolence, and it's through Emory University, the King Center, and the University of Rhode Island. They have come together, they put together this course. And I would love to really incorporate that. I'd love to incorporate it in the school system, but it's for everyone. It's a conflict resolution piece that deals, it helps in marriages, it helps in families, it helps with schools and students. And one of the things that we notice when I take that, when I give that, or facilitate that class, is that we do a values test. And there are people from different backgrounds and different, young people from different backgrounds and walks of life in this class. And we divide them into like groups of five, and then we do a values assessment. And we give them about twenty values, and then we ask them to add values to that. But then we ask them to narrow down, what are their top values? And what we realize, in every case, every single case, is that we have eighty-five to ninety-five percent in common, and only about five to fifteen percent differences. The problem is, we focus on our differences.
On the little bit, yeah.
And they overcrowd our commonalities.
So what are some values that you're asking the participants to evaluate?
We're asking them, like, what are your values? Is your family values, your parents, your, your education, your job, you know, your association with other students. So those are some of the values that we ask, but then they can include the values that they, that they think of as well. But that's something that we, we realize, and my thing is, if you feed your commonalities, you will starve your differences.
Yeah.
And I think it also comes from, you know, I'm a minister, minister of the gospel, and, and I believe, I'm faith-based, and I believe in faith, and I believe in, in God, and I believe that we need a lot of prayer.
Yes.
We, we definitely need a lot of prayer. Prayer changes things. And I don't want to get into the religious...
You can, it's okay. It's a friendly room, but, you know, yeah. So...
So what do I plan to do? I guess that was the question.
I hear, all, I'm not...
It's all good things, but...
All good things. However, I always hear everybody say, I'm going to have town halls. Do you know how many town halls I've heard that actually happen? They only happen three months before election time. So how can the constituents hold you accountable to actually hear what they have to say?
You know what? That's what they need to do. Hold me accountable. You know, seriously, because when I think of voting, I think there's three pieces to voting. There's registering, there's voting, and then there's holding the people accountable that you vote for and elected to office. That's a piece that we don't do. We get them in the office, and then they do whatever, and I'm just saying, in some instances, and we don't hold them accountable. We just, we'll talk about it, we'll say something about, but we don't hold them accountable. And so, yeah, I want them to hold me accountable, because I'm, I'm absolutely going to do it. And, and I don't know what other thing I can say to make them believe that, but actually do it, and come together and say, hey, this is what we're going to... I'm also, I'm a communications major from Fayetteville State University, and my thing is communications. That's a big piece. And I want to allow them other opportunities, other alternatives. I want to have a website where they can go to and, and learn more. We have the city website, but I do want to have a District One site and information, phone, where they can call, they can voice their concerns. Of course, I will, you know, make them aware of FA Fix It and the things where they don't have to come, come to me, but...
And that's, that's been a concern of a lot that I've observed from some of the council applicants, and so the mayoral guys too.
Right.
You know, nobody's really taken stock of what the city does before they're out there pontificating on, oh, we need a dashboard for this, or we need to cut the waste. It's like, okay, first of all, where's the budget? Where have you cut? I talked about this with Hunter Bolic. But, you know, the city website has a lot of stuff. The first thing I tell people is, have you signed up for the city manager's email? It's on the homepage, you just put your email. You'll at least, they're like, well, I didn't know this, that, or the other. It's like, well...
Except for the fact that it's all past. I want to know what, where...
No, there's, there's a community schedule, calendar on there, but you, see, that's the part of the citizen on, the key, let me not say citizen, the keyboard warrior on there complaining and bitching and moaning, because, oh, I didn't know. It's like, well, did you just go to...
I do subscribe, subscribe to his newsletter, and he tells me about...
You're not the average bear.
And he tells me everything that happened last week. I was like, gosh, I wish I knew that happened. I would have gone down there. So, that's what I'm...
Did you check the calendar?
Anyway.
And there's a lot, there's so many things going on, and it's kind of hard to keep up, but...
The other thing, like, I don't know, I, I feel for you guys running, because I feel like you're promising the town halls, you're promising these things, but why are the people in office not doing it? Is it because they're afraid of being more exposed to the constituency, or is it just too busy as a sitting council person? What do you think that is?
You know, I can't speak for them, but I will once I become...
You can observe what's going on.
I'm, 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 no, I believe, I do believe that a lot of it has to do, once they get in there and they see the demands that come along with it.
Level of comfort.
They just don't have the time, because there's just so much going on. And every, I'm sorry, but every, you know, a lot of times when we go to these forums, they ask us questions about the city as a whole. And we're going to be representing a particular district. So sometimes it's a little difficult, because it's like, you know, the concerns in that district is not the same concerns as it, you know, crime is the big piece in your, but in crime in District One is not their greatest concern. So you have to kind of adjust yourself to say, okay, what question are they asking? Are they asking about the city, or are they asking about District One?
Well, are they city, or are they asking a county question? That's the other problem.
Or are they asking a county question?
You know, what's in your silo, and what can you, can you not do?
Exactly, exactly. Just like they ask you about the school system and the things that are ran by the county, which we do need to develop a tighter partnership with our county government. But yes, absolutely.
Well, we're having more visible city-county liaison meetings, but from what I'm understanding is they are for show. We're not getting enough stuff accomplished. We need the electeds to further lean on city and county management to be having those meetings more often between the city-county manager. It's really, the electeds, it's more of a, I'm not going to say for show, but it definitely is not where the main meat of the job is getting done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. But it's, it is good to see it again, you know, more, more visible. I appreciate that.
They normally do it, what, twice a year or once a year?
No, 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 they're doing a monthly now.
They're doing a monthly?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, they just had one, yes, last week.
The new city, the, the new...
Or today, I think.
The new county, the new county is working a lot with the city. That has not always been the case. So this is new to the area to have such cohesion.
It is.
Kirk Devier is doing a fantastic job.
Yes, yes, he is. And, oh, God, you can't comment about a Democrat like that, Laura. You're, we're Republicans.
I like her.
We're not supposed to.
If you're doing a good job, I don't care what your affiliation is. If you're doing a good job, you're doing a good job regardless.
I have a lot of good fun making fun of some of my extreme Republican and Democrat counterparts, because the crazy has no home here. Okay? Maybe they live here, but they're not welcome in this show, okay? We're in the middle ninety percent of my neighborhood that I know we get along, and I get along with you sometime.
I would pay to see some of the crazy come to the show.
Oh, I invite them. And, and that's what I, what I was going to say was that, about the visibility of the, of the elected. You know, my opinion was, you have electeds that maybe, hmm, the elevator don't go all the way to the top, and the more that they have exposure on this show like ours, or on Upzone with Tisha Waddell, or WIDU that does numerous shows, I think they understand who they are personally, and they decide not to expose themselves further to prove what everybody kind of suspects.
Right.
Because we've had a couple that refuse to come on the show, for whatever reason, and it just reminds me that, hey, if you get elected, you represent another half of people that didn't vote for you. What the hell are you afraid of? Go into the rooms.
Yeah.
Be brave. I mean, anyway, but that's just my...
And they're just questions.
Because, because I hear some feedback, you know, you didn't have XYZ. It's like, no, 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 no.
Everybody gets invited.
Here's, here's the email that I sent on June, July, and August fifteenth, thereabouts, three months, same list. And it was funny, because after the second or third email, it's like, hey, I already signed up. What's up? I'm like, just, just, you're fine, you're good. It goes to everybody. So go ahead, Josh.
So who, who, who are you at this point running against? Do you have an incumbent, or...
There are, no, I am running for Kathy Jensen's seat. She's running for mayor.
For Kathy Jensen's, okay, okay, yeah.
Big high heels to fill. I don't think he'll look good in those, though.
No, I think she looks better, but...
Yeah, she, she looks better than high heels.
Yeah, she does.
But I'll come with it.
And kind of what would, if, if you had to identify one, two, or three kind of, of your passions that you want to bring to the office, what would they be?
You know, I still line up with the three pieces that, my philosophy is GPO, it's growth, and it's also, the growth piece is, of course, economic development. I meant, I meant GSO, I'm thinking of it. But GSO, growth, safety, and opportunity.
Okay.
I want to help build a community where, where businesses, all businesses, can thrive, where people feel safe and secure in their own neighborhoods and their own communities, and where everyone, everyone has a voice in shaping our future. So my commitment is to listen to our, to my constituents, to collaborate with the local elected officials, and to take action that benefits everybody. So those areas would be economic development, public safety, and of course, quality of life and well-being. Economic development is the number one piece, and some people will say, well, you know, public safety and crime, but economic, in District One, economic development, because when you look at it, economic development has, it wears on, on all of those other things.
On all of them, yeah.
You know, when you have good, thriving economy, when you have people who have great, good-paying jobs, guess what? Your crime goes.
Yeah. Why'd you guys get the titanium plant? You got, you're going to have that behind Goodyear, aren't you?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so lucky you guys, okay. All right. So, you know, go ahead.
Now, that's another important thing that, that we have to work with. We do have Methodist College, and we're going to work closely with Fayetteville State University and Fayetteville Technical Community College, because the piece is, we have to be prepared. Our workforce development has to be up to a level to where we're able to take those jobs that are coming in. So that's one of the pieces we have to really focus on.
So I was in a meet and greet with Mayor Colvin, and he was discussing the titanium plant, some other economics, and I said, and I, it was a small enough room, I could get away with being me, and I raised my hand, and I said, all right, but where the hell are we going to get the workers from? And like, you know, you're talking about these high-paying jobs, and are you talking about these companies coming here and bringing their people with them?
That's what they do.
And that's what they're going to have to do, because we, we're, the school system, I think, came out with fifty percent proficiency lately.
Or have for-the-job training.
Yeah.
Before the job gets here, training. Start, if you're coming in here to our community, and you want to help our community by having a titanium plant or with these high-service jobs, you know what? Make it so that when you come in here, you have pre-job training, so that you can train the guy that's right now only making six, seven, eight dollars an hour. You know what? And you have to hire...
Where's the six dollar an hour guy? Let me have, I need a couple of them.
Okay, whatever.
I think that's illegal.
It is.
But at least hire eighty percent of your employees from the local area, and have some higher echelon. Don't ship in all the high-end jobs in here. Start teaching the people here in Fayetteville.
We could, but with the capacity, and that's what I was kind of, I was kind of poking fun with the mayor, like, where the hell are these guys going to come from? It is Fayetteville Tech doing the, finding out from the company, what do you need training on?
There you go.
And economic development, they just built, or they are building out the Homakers Furniture Building on the bottom of Hay Street, right there, that big Homakers Furniture, you know what I'm talking about?
I know, yeah, I'm trying to envision it. I know, I know.
So, economic development, they have purchased that building, and they're converting it into like all these little, almost like a WeWork for businesses.
Okay.
So all these little startups and incubators can be there, but there is an element of workforce training in that building. So, that's, that's what the problem is. And my, my thing was like, well, how long is it going to take to, to stand all that up? And Fayetteville Tech raised their hand and said, well, not Fayetteville Tech, just the council, but he says, eighteen months, six months, that they can do it. So it is within our wheelhouse to do it, but we have to have the conditions met, safety and security. And...
Infrastructure.
This is, one thing about the safety in Fayetteville, everybody, I'm going to ask you the most loaded question ever that's been asked of any candidate is, what are you going to do to solve the murders? Before you answer, just, just think about it for a minute.
Do you mean crime as a whole, or just murder?
Murders. Can you stop somebody from hating somebody else and shooting them in the face?
You can't stop.
Thank you. Okay.
You can't stop it. You can design and implement different initiatives and programs that could help reduce it, but you can't stop.
Players going to play. Like, I, I just, look, if somebody has hate in their heart, and they're pissed at that other guy, they're going to go shoot him. It's not a city government issue.
Wait a minute, hold up. It's not always just hate in your heart. It, to me, it comes with lack of, nothing personal here to anybody that's not in the home, but fathers in the home to teach their young men and young women how to be young ladies and young men. Let's get the men back in their homes, raising their children, and we don't have to worry, and you know how to handle...
All my children have taken firearm safety. We're good to go.
Okay. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about get your men...
They all have firearm, they're, they're good.
Women need to stop having babies without making a commitment to the man, period.
Keep that aspirin between your legs, ma'am.
You know what? I believe in...
No, it's men and women are both equally responsible. Thank you very much.
If you would just keep that aspirin, nobody would be worrying. What was the guy that said that and got in big trouble for?
I don't know, and, but I'm not going to play into your misogynistic remarks.
My misogynistic, okay, all right.
Yeah, I believe that, that partly has something to do with it. I believe that we need to implement from a very young age, the Bible tells us to teach a child while he's young, so that when he grows old, he won't depart from these things. But my thing is really getting to them. In 2004, I returned back to the school that I started in elementary. I read to every, I took on the challenge to read to every kindergarten student in Cumberland County at fifty-four schools. I went into each school, I started... I went into each school. I started with Clifdale and they had seven kindergarten classrooms. I read to each individual. They say, you want us to put them all in the library? I was like, no, I want to read to each of them. And I want to develop. So I, I delve into different personalities. So, so I was able to.
Bring that island cool.
No, to take different, I mean, I can go different ways. Um, what I'm saying is I was able
Just like that.
To, to, to use those characters to bring out that joy in the kids and they loved it. And I said, if I could develop a love for reading at this early age at five, imagine what that can do for them, you know? And that was back then. So a lot of them have graduated. I've seen them in the grocery stores or whatever. Hey mom, that's the guy that read to us.
Make an impact, yeah.
It does make an impact. And that was just little me, but imagine if we had more programs and, and things that help our young people when they first get started
Right, right.
and implementing that.
Well, and I think that's the perception is, you know, what are you going to do to stop the murder? Well, our work started 18 years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, is what I think is foundational work. It has to be done.
Yeah, no, I, I, and I, I haven't been given the past 18 years with your kid you have.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, you made a little brat. So you know, like.
Hey, hey, hey.
And a lot of it has to do.
He's, he's, he's on a roll tonight.
Yeah, he is. He's full, full of piss and vinegar this afternoon.
Somebody else was today. So I'm just, I'm taking a cue.
And I kept mine private.
Yes, you did. But I'm calling you out.
A lot of it has to do with mental health. And I think that's one thing that with the new CSO and the Community um, Safety Office of Community Safety, OCS, yeah.
It's okay. We don't even know what it really does yet. We've had like six guests on talking about it and we're still kind of.
That's my next question.
No, that is the purpose of it. Um, and, and people who have um, had children or have children who have um, these issues, they can really relate because the thing, the, the, the position for them is to be able to catch it because a lot of people, say you call the office, uh, call the police, call 911, uh, this child is spazzing out, having, you know, a lot of them aren't trained to deal with those issues. A lot of them don't know, they'll do whatever they can, but they're not trained to deal with those pieces. And it's not because the person is bad. It's because they're, we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principality and, and, and spiritual wickedness and and high places. That's what the wrestle is against. So um, the focus should be on the root of the cause. So that's what in my understanding, the OCS is doing, uh, the Office of Community, OCS, the Office of Community Safety is doing.
I'm surprised you're not hearing that in your sleep in this cycle of campaigning, but uh,
Right, yeah, yeah.
Well, and so what I think we can surmise from the OCS is that it's not going to be 25-year-old social workers going to respond. It will be the police responding and calming down and then the OCS will connect them with.
The resources.
The resources they need. So at least we got that. I think we gleaned that much out of the multiple descriptions.
Yeah. And as long as, I mean, so from the descriptions that we've heard in the past, um, I, that's probably one of the better, more accurate ones um, of ideally.
Right.
What they should be doing. Um, and we've gotten everything. I mean, we've gotten everything from policing the police to, you know, just.
And again, that's where the genesis was. That's where it started. It was, they wanted to have an arm to really police the police. And we're all like, no, that's not what we, we want intervention. We want the next step. Uh, I think, I don't know, was Chief Braden the one that we discussed talking about there was a multiple homicide and like, he ended up having the kid in his office?
Yep.
That night because the only one left and DSS says 48 hours.
And that's where to, to, to have an organization that is capable of kind of standing in the gap.
Absolutely.
Um, and they're, they're, they're qualified to do that because again, police may be trained a little bit in de-escalation, things, things like that, but to, it, it's just not going to be the same.
They have specific training in that mental health area. And that's why I think it's important, um, as the chief laid out in his plans to uh, deal with it. Um, that's why I think it's important that we work with uh, the Mental Health Department, DSSS and these organizations and these agencies that, that's what they do. That is their thing.
You could just blame the county because you are a city guy. So you can just say, look, the county does the health and welfare, but uh, but the city, the, the city is in partnership. The DRC is one of the best things that we have to start the intake of homeless, you know, unhoused people. I'm calling them homeless. I'm not going to go PC, but uh, it connects them with services and we didn't have anything up until three years ago. And then as soon as it opens, you have people, well, where are the bet? Dude, we haven't even had this yet. Can we let this kind of percolate and see what help we could gain and then?
And it's worth, it is, it's doing its purpose. Because I, I deal with a, a lot of that between our food bank and individuals needing uh, housing. There are resources that they offer.
Right.
Um, they may not be the Salvation Army downtown. Uh, it may be a group home or something like that.
Yeah, there's not a bed of the DRC, but they will connect you with people.
We lose the Salvation Army?
It's uh,
It's in limbo still last October.
So we were going to give them half a million dollars. Then we sent health inspectors down. We're like, hey, look, there's mold. Hey, look, there's this and that. So you know, we have standards even for our homeless. We won't let them just sleep anywhere.
Yeah.
So, you know, obviously not, and they're back on the street, but.
I was going to say, wait a minute, aren't they out on the streets? That is just anywhere.
I don't know if it'd be an upgrade or not to put them in a
That's true.
less than facility, but uh.
By the way, you were recognized with the Order of the Long Leaf Pine.
Really?
Congratulations.
That's one of North Carolina's highest honors. So congratulations to that.
Thank you.
So what service accomplishment are you most proud of? And how does that shape your candidacy?
Great question. Um.
That's what I'm here for. You see him keep going, Laura?
What service have I, you know? I don't know about proud of. Uh, well, I would say really working with our young people like I did with the reading program. That gives me the most um, satisfaction of being able to give them something that they can hold on to um, and something that can help them in their future. But I've, you know, I've had the privilege and honor to work on several commissions and boards. I've worked with the United Way Partnership for Children, just a lot of them. That's kind of been my life service. Um, and so I guess all of them together, but just seeing the faces. So you know, I use the different voices and I use the different characters and that really grab a lot of our young people because sometimes it's hard to get them. So I will use that to get them and then I will give them the educational piece. But I would have to say our young people, worth, working with our young people probably was the most um, the most powerful piece of it. What would I do?
And how does that shape your candidacy?
That shapes my candidacy because I want to do the same thing for District One. Um, what I realize is there are a lot of agencies, a lot of initiatives and programs that are out, especially for our young people, but nobody knows about them. I found five different organizations just since I've been canvassing that nobody knows about. They don't know about each other. So I want to develop a hub for all like organizations, anti-crime youth organizations where they can come together, unify, they can uh, pull resources from each other. They can uh, even at, at times merge, you know, and be much more effective.
Yeah.
I, a young man came to the council one night, uh, a couple of months ago, and he talked about his organization helping young people. And he's, and he asked the council, he said, I really need some help. I need some support. He had no idea that there are grants available. He had no idea um, that there were resources available for his agency through the city. Uh, so there's, the awareness is a big piece and making people aware and really, really working with our young people because that's, that's kind of my pet peeve because they're our future.
Are you going to break in the song now?
Oh, no.
I don't know what voice I'm about.
Has anybody told you you're a really good singer?
Yeah, what? Yeah.
I hope, I hope not.
No. Oh, you had that directed at Peter. Now it's coming my way.
I'm glad I can spread it around a little bit. You can all have a little love over here.
Give Jim's jokes back.
So, yeah, right? Oh, man. I heard some of his stuff. He's pretty blue, some of his stuff, man. It's, it's not for pastor ears.
No, yeah, no.
You know why they sing that though?
Why, who, Whitney?
You know why they sing that? So you don't have to.
All right, I'm quitting.
All right, I'm done. I'm done with you all.
That was just a joke.
No, I got you. I got you.
So back to campaigny things and I'm going to put you right on the spot because we've had some very contentious votes in the last month, I would say.
Contentious votes?
Yeah. So we had the 7-Eleven thing. We had ShotSpotter. And what else did people get pissed off about? The curfew. So how do you feel about one, two and three? I mean, we're, we're, and look, I'm sorry, this is, if you're up on the dais, you're going to have to decide something. So let's hear it. What's your opinion on these things?
Okay. So first of all, let's go with um, ShotSpotter.
Okay.
Okay, ShotSpotter, um, I agree with it.
Okay.
And the reason why I agree with it is for a couple of reasons. First of all, um, uh, Malik Davis, who is over the
Number two, District two, yeah.
Where the, the ShotSpotter is located. Um, he said, the people in the community, he's been getting great response.
Right.
People want it. They feel safer. They feel secure with that there. That's one reason. The other reason, and I guess the main reason is our police chief says that, hey, we need this.
Right.
It helps us get there quicker. It helps us um, in our investigation. It helps in many ways and we need it. So if your police chief who you hired to, to deal with law enforcement is telling you it's a necessary and uh, effective tool.
Why don't you listen to the guy you hired to do? Yeah. So there's a.
No, let's hire a consultant and do something else.
Well, you're just jealous you weren't the consultant. Be quiet, Laura. So there is a fallacy going around that it is an invasion of Fourth Amendment rights. It's illegal search and seizure. And I, I told somebody that brought that up to me at the mayoral forum yesterday. I said, well, what about license plate readers? Because your license plate's in public. You have no expectation of privacy in public.
In public.
So that's why the cops can read license plates and oh, look, he popped hot for a warrant.
Yeah.
Okay. They also use those in homicide investigations to narrow down where that car went. So ShotSpotter being told that it's an illegal search and seizure against the Fourth Amendment, really, it's just noise in the air. You're not, you're not going into somebody's house. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up because that came up at the forum yesterday and I, I was just like, did they go inside?
Yeah.
You know, anyway, so I, all right, 7-Eleven. Do you want your Slurpee or not?
Uh, I want my Slurpee, but I, I'll drive another mile to get it.
Weak. Okay. I want my Slurpee right there where I can get it.
But you know, that's not going to be a problem. You can go to the other street corner, right across the street and get it.
Uh-uh, that's a Circle K.
Oh.
Isn't it?
That's not going to be a problem because we're not going to be uh, District One anymore. We're going to be District 7-Eleven.
Okay. One on every corner, dog. Yeah.
There's going to, there's a lot of plans that uh, 7-Eleven is putting up all over. But for that particular instance, I would have to side with the people who I would represent.
Absolutely.
The attorney was there to represent 7-Eleven and, or the company that wants to build it. I would be there to represent the people. And if I felt that it was, you know, it was on their side, I would, I would probably talk with the, and, and kind of give them a better understanding. But when I look at it, I, I have to really look at it. First of all, the um, the zoning commission.
Approved it.
Disapproved it. They declined it three to two.
Okay.
The very first time.
The first time. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Three to two. So there's a reason. First of all, there's, there's a reason it's zoned uh, residential right now.
Right, right.
Uh, that's number one. But then the zoning board, the zoning commission who denied it three to two. Hello? Okay. And then it goes back. They examine the buffers and do a few.
Well, they, the, the developer added things. I think a larger fence and made sure the lights were shielded so it wouldn't be so bright. So.
Why didn't you do that to begin with?
Because it's cheaper, not to do it first.
So that just shows you.
I mean, you're going to, listen, you're going to, you're going to ask everybody, you know, you want to fool around. Eventually somebody's going to say, yes, that's what they're, that's what they're running for, you know?
I, I got what, I got.
Yeah, you get what I'm laying out.
But then, when it came back, only one changed their mind. One still disagreed with it for a reason.
Yeah.
And one didn't even show up. So um, when you look at, when you look at all those things that surround it, what there, it's not that they don't want it rezoned. They don't want a 7-Eleven.
Right.
It could be used for other purposes. So it could still suit the owner's uh, purpose of, 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 you know, getting money.
Well, I made somebody's head explode because I said, well, if you didn't want it, why don't you buy the property and do something with it? Oh, I got, oh, they were not happy with me when I said that, you know, but you know, I mean, but it's, look, the thing's been there forever. It's been empty. You know, somebody's just trying to develop it. I mean, I, look.
So let's put a 7-Eleven on it. I, no, I got you.
No, I mean, eventually things are going to change and that's, we have a lot of not in my backyards in Fayetteville and I think along across the country, you know, people, they, we want jobs, we want development. Well, that's what that looks like sometimes. And I don't, I'm not saying that a 7-Eleven is economic development because it does not create that base job that feeds, you know, that, but.
That a titanium company does.
The 18-year-old is going to have some place to work after, after high school. I mean, you know, I mean, I mean during the summer, whatever, like there's got to be something for them to do, but that is not an economic driver. It's not, it's not an economic driver. I know it's not, but uh, you know, like, you know, look, I say, look, Baldino's is not economic development. I just, I take advantage of the e- economy that's there and the traffic that's there.
I get it. Number, that's another piece. The last traffic study they did was three, four years ago.
Okay. Well, they're expensive. How many you want?
How many, I want an accurate and up-to-date one.
I got you.
Yeah.
Because so much has happened. We got 295.
Yeah, I was going to say 295.
Well, hopefully you'll have 685 through there in the next 20 years.
So that's my thing. You know, did you do the studies? Right. That was why the mayor declined because he said, when was the last time y'all did a
That's fair.
Traffic study? They said 22. He was like, okay, well, I'm not going to be able to agree.
And nothing during pandemic should even count in that. Traffic was weird. Everything was weird. That was, that, that just.
So to the voters of District One, what I want to point out is thoughtful decision-making over here.
Yeah.
I don't agree with them.
Yeah.
But.
We are commercial.
Like I'm a commercial real estate. I'm like, yeah, I want to build this damn thing, you know? But he knows about how many, how many zoning commissions there were. He knows the breakdown of the vote. So that's a guy that's done his homework and I can appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the last thing? 7-Eleven and ShotSpotter and what else? The curfew.
Curfew.
Oh, the curfew.
I was just thinking about things that have pissed people off. So here you go.
And I understand. And you know, you can please some of the people some of the time, but it pisses all the people all the time. It was that Mark Twain.
Yeah.
So with um, what was it again?
So, so usually with the curfew question, this is how I, I, I do it. I say, look, is it the city's job to raise our children? And what was your position on the curfew is how we've been asking people.
Is it the city's job to raise our children?
Yeah.
Um, is it the government's job to tell us? No, let me not even go.
Go ahead. Think about it.
No, I'm just saying because it's the same thing, you know?
This is, uh, stream of consciousness here. So.
You would agree with that.
Yeah.
I don't think it's their job, but I do think it is their role to put in place things that are necessary in order to decrease the, the crime and the things that are happening with our young people. I do agree with the curfew under its current conditions. Now initially, it had a clause in there that, that, that would have potentially put someone in jail, a young person in jail.
Right, right.
Put a, and then they'd have a record.
Well, and it would have been as unenforceable as the county's is because what they did is they boilerplate copied, copied and pasted the county's that's been on the books for 20, 25 years. They didn't really change anything, but the county doesn't really enforce it either.
No.
So it's another tool for our police, but also what the hell is a 14, 15-year-old business, have business out in the middle of the night?
Exactly.
I mean, that's, that's protecting, to serve and protect the community.
What business does a 52-year-old have doing out of three, let me tell you, none.
I got none. I got nothing for you.
Not good business. Yeah, it's good.
My business is asleep at that.
I ain't going nowhere. That is, yeah.
But yeah, I, I, I agree with, I concur with it under those conditions.
With the curfew.
Uh, with the curfew.
With the second draft of the curfew.
Right, the second draft. And then the, the, the fact that it's only going to be really on a temporary basis, well, for one year.
Uh, trial basis.
A trial basis. And um, thank you. Uh, once that trial basis is over, which would be in another nine months, I guess.
About, yeah.
Because it's already been about three months.
It feels like it's been a year, but go ahead.
Yeah. Right. It's been talked about for you, but um, with that, then we can look at it and we can say, okay, we're measuring it now. Is it good? Is something we need to change? Is something we need to take away? Is it something we need to add? Or is it something we need to just eliminate because it's not being effective?
That's crazy. So voters of District One, one more time, the guy will.
He's got it. I mean.
He'll math a little bit and see the numbers of what happens.
He knows his stuff. I'll tell you that.
He does, he does. So um, we are coming up on almost an hour and so before we take ourselves, it goes by quick. I told you we're going to have fun tonight. So uh, before we get out of here, how are we going to find out more? Laura, you giving me that look? Have I missed? Did I, did I cut you off on some good questions? You want to drill this guy? Okay. All right, all right. I mean. So.
I kick you under the table if I didn't ask my question.
That's why I'm standing away from that side of the table. So uh, Stefan, if we want to learn more about you, where would we go? Website, phone number?
VoteFerguson.com. VoteFerguson.com. You can go there. You can also call 910-829-3920, 849-3920.
Oh, Lord.
Um, yes.
You can, just go to CarolinaCabinet.com. We'll have the show. We'll have his links and stuff up and make producer Jim responsible for that. So, so what else you got? You good? Okay. Well, we are 60 minutes, well, almost 60 minutes is up again. We, we doing it. We're doing it. So thank you Pastor John.